I'll just delete if I do.
I have camera controls up here.
Yeah. Yeah, that one's slow.
Well, according to our brand new clock, I have seven o'clock. It is August 18th. Welcome to the regular meeting of the battleground city council. I'll call this to order and we'll start with the pledge. Please rise if you're able. It is August eighteenth. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Battleground City Council. I'll call this to order and we'll start with the pledge. Please rise if you're able. Roll call, please.
Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Kipers.
Here.
Councilmember Farrar.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And the clerk is present. That concludes the roll.
That brings us to agenda approval portion of the meeting. Council, what's your pleasure? Move through a proof.
Second.
Of a motion and a second by Councilmember Overholzer, second by Councilmember Farrar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Brings us to council member reports. I have one. The CTRAN composition meeting was a Tuesday, I think it might have been last Tuesday. We met. For those who aren't aware, the state passed a law that CTRAN must be proportionally represented population-wise. The motion and the proposed solution to the state was that we would go down to three small city slots. I think that they probably will say no to that. So there's a backup to go down to two small city slots, which would be proportional. So there is going to possibly be another meeting. I don't think there will be. But that's something that we will, just in case there is, we'll appoint an alternate because I won't be able to make that meeting. But just to be safe, I'd like us to have representation for that. So if you have any other questions on that, I'm happy to answer.
What is the? I know they've proposed three small city spots, but what is the proposal for the three small cities?
It would be us, La Center, and Yakult would share a seat for the third, and then Washugle Ridge Field, and then Camas would have their own. And that gets them to within about 2,000 each. So that, that was actually my proposal, was the closest I could do math-wise.
Yeah.
If it's two seats, it would be North County and East County, meaning we would add Ridge Field to that. And then Camas Washugle would share one.
Thank you.
And then we would have to most likely sit down and have an ILA to hash that out between those cities. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment on that. I was able to sit for a part of it before I had to leave to my mosquito control meeting. But I want to say I appreciate the effort that was put in by the smaller cities to really go and propose the 333. I think it was important that we stated that's what we would like for the betterment of the county taxpayers. So I just want to say that I appreciate the smaller cities really sticking it in there and saying they, they really wanted notification of how we would prefer it. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think the small city's got to say we, we wouldn't change it, but so, but yes, and it was City Vancouver voted against the 333 proposal. Other than that, everybody else voted for it, including County Council. Any other questions on that or any other council member reports?
I, I do have an EMS two.
Okay. Go for it.
EMS two met last Monday on August 11th. A pretty light agenda, but we did cover a review of the 2025 budget and then a proposed 2026 budget going forward. So just a brief summary. We started with a beginning fund balance of January 1, 25 with 375,000. Just a little north of that. We had revenue interest earnings of just over 9,000. We have already existing approved expenses at 89,000. This is for advertising of the RFP, which is very minimal, $159. Tablet reimbursement for District 3 and 6. And then we have outstanding approved expenses of 114,000. This is the software utilized on that tablet and the remainder of tablet reimbursement for the three fire districts, and that leaves us with an ending fund balance of 180,379 for the year. And then we have a proposed budget contract administration for 209,554. We just have to get all this in, in line with county budget. And so all that had to be in by that meeting. And then we have various fees of total expenses proposed for next year of 210,000. So we're going to be a little in the red on that, but with the ending fund balance at 180, we still have a little bit of wiggle room there, but the additional fees are the press dispatch fee, medical program director fee, and the contract administration fee, and then a small audit fee from the state. So that was, that proposed budget was approved to move forward with. And then we also just had a, a work group update, which we'll hear more about further down in the agenda tonight. So that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Mosquito control I attended. We also are deep in budget talks, went over the asks and the wants and the needs, and we will go back in October to vote on a budget for that. Other than that, it's been a happily slow mosquito season, apparently. We did comment the yellow jackets seem to be quite bad, but the mosquitoes are good. So anyway, that was good news. That's it.
Yeah, if we asked you to do yellow jackets too, that might, that budget would probably get a little higher. All good? All right. This brings us into the mayor's report. This is a, a little unconventional, but we're not too worried about protocol on some of this stuff. This is National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. It's September 2, 2025. It is the mayor's discretion on proclamations. For this one, this was a council member request, and because of that, I'm going to be presenting it to the person who requested it. With that, I'll let her give a little explanation and start us off.
Okay, thank you, Mayor McCoy. I requested Mayor McCoy's consideration to proclaim September as National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month for the city of Battleground. And this is an opportunity to recognize an issue that affects countless families, friends, and neighbors in our community. The month of September will be a time to remember those we've lost, support those who struggle, and affirm our commitment to fostering hope, understanding, and compassion to everyone, no matter what they're dealing with. I personally lost a brother-in-law to suicide and witnessed firsthand how this tragedy impacted his parents, his wife, children, siblings, nieces and nephews, his business partner, his employees, and his friends. I have also lost friends and walked alongside several parents who've lost their children to suicide. I recognize the impacts to our first responders, the police, the clergy, our schools, and our community as a whole. And I believe it's important that we be aware, be educated, and be proactive in supporting those with mental health issues and their families. So before I read the proclamation, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Lynn to con, con, comment on the statistics related to battleground and suicide and any other personal comments he may have to share.
Thank you. Sadly, this is a topic that I instruct nationwide on. And when you talk about the subject of suicide, it'd be really hard for most people to not know somebody that's been impacted by it. Typically, what you see is as our population continues to get older, the risk for suicide gets higher. Females will attempt suicide more often. Males will complete the act more often. What we have here in Battleground, just pulling the statistics for the last six years, we've lost 14 souls to suicide. 2019 was our highest year. Just as the national statistics suggest, our breakdown, we've lost 11 men and three women. When we look at the actual people who have suicidal ideologies, it's pretty much a really relatively close between male and females. However, the females have certainly attempted it more often than not. Thankfully, 2020, which if you remember, that's when COVID started. That was our highest year, and we've been on a decline with the exception of 2023. This year, we are on track to have the lowest year in many, many, many years, which is something that we are very, very grateful for. But we've lost 12 adults and two juveniles. We've had more than our fair share impact through the Battleground School District. It's something that our officers are trained of. As the councilwoman said, sadly, this is something that impacts our first responders and our military at a absolutely awful rate. First 30 years of my career, I spent in Las Vegas. Seventeen of the folks that I worked with took their own lives. And those are just people that were either had worked for me at one point or friends of mine. That wasn't just for the whole agency. Sadly, the number's much, much higher. And just like she said, I've, I've lost family members to it, friends to it. It's something that we really truly have to pay attention to. It's one of those things that if you don't address it, it's the elephant in the room. It's not going to go away. We have a lot of resources that we dedicate to it. It's something that the Battleground Police Department has dedicated resources to. We have clinicians that we use that are on call because the impact of people's mental health, especially for the officers, and I'm not discounting others, but you see things you shouldn't have to. And because of that, we're really cognizant about making sure the officers know that it's okay to reach out, and we do it confidentially. So very proud of the program that we have.
Thank you, Chief. I'll read the proclamation now. Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, September 2025. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives in large part because of abuse, poverty, bullying, and many other types of trauma that are a root cause of mental illness. And whereas suicide is among the top eight leading causes of death for people aged 10 to 64 in the U.S., and the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 34. And whereas suicide affects countless family members and friends who are left to navigate their struggles with their loss, and whereas of those who die from suicide, more than 90% have a diagnosable mental health disorder and are emotionally the most vulnerable to suicidal thoughts. And whereas education and prevention tools must be promoted to reduce this tragedy so that those at risk of attempting suicide can be identified. And whereas effective treatment is available when needed so that these individuals can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, and citizen has a responsibility to understand the role each institution or individual plays in promoting mental wellness, suicide awareness, and the importance of supporting prevention efforts in every possible way.
Now therefore, I, Troy McCoy, Mayor of the city of Battleground, formally designate September 2025 as National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. I call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institution, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of the causes of suicide, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, as well as the mental health of our family members, friends, coworkers, acquaintances, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions, especially as it relates to suicide. And I will just add, when I was on school board, you never want to give a diploma to the parents alone.
Right.
So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the CTRAN composition. We just need an alternate for the meeting, and then I will bring that person up to speed as best I can. I believe the meeting is September 3rd. Does that sound right, Taylor? So I know Chairish can't do it. I can't do it. So we can, we can, yeah. You're, you are the alternate of CTRAN, but not, the composition board is different. So if you'd like to be the alternate for this, I, I would take that as a volunteering person.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, is there any issues from council on that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is yours. You hand that to her and then I will try to explain it as best I can. And I believe that brings us to Chief, and we have a couple of new officers. It's an exciting day, two of them.
So before I introduce our two officers, putting somebody a little bit on the spot, I'd like to welcome Officer Trent Elms. You'll just raise your hand. For those who don't know, Trent's been on the agency for a number of years, but he was deployed his last two years serving his country, and we just got him back. So it's a wonderful addition. So it's great to have you, Trent. So if Officer Cisco Martinez and Lacey Thayer would join me at the podium, please. And to the folks that are in the, in the audience, how meaningful it is to see our room packed with you guys to, to come in and support them. It means so very much to our agency. It means so very much to the city, and it certainly means so very much to our two, two new officers. So without further ado, let me introduce both of them. Officer Francisco, also goes by Cisco Martinez. Prior to working for the Battleground Police Department, Cisco worked as a corrections deputy for Clark County. He's married to his wife, Kylan. I saw her here, right? You, you can wave. For 12 years, and they have two cats he wanted to share. He grew up in Miami, Florida, and also in Roy, Utah. Prior to working for Clark County, he earned his EMT certifications. While working for the county, Cisco completed both the security response team and crisis negotiator training. When not at work, Cisco enjoys hiking, camping, swimming, and sailing. When asked for a fun fact, Cisco said that according to his wife, he follows his favorite Miami-based sports teams too much. So we're going to introduce him to the, to the Mariners, to the Seahawks and the Kraken. We'll, we'll make sure he's learning, and then that he goes to the movies probably too much. They also, he and his wife enjoy trying to visit every national park in the country. They'll also randomly stop in places during their road trips, which don't necessarily have trails, just like to go out and explore. So before I also introduce Lacey, to let you know, these, they both started the academy in April. It's more than 700 hours that they put in to make it all the way through the academy. There's a tremendous amount of standards that they're required to meet. Now that they've graduated, they have to move on to the next step, which is the field training program, which they're going to be both assigned to one of our senior officers that they have to demonstrate their proficiencies in a large number of categories before we'll release them out on their own. But having a chance to speak to both of them, we have every inclination that they're going to be overly successful. So Lacey was born in Vancouver. She grew up in Woodland. She loves the Pacific Northwest area that she calls home. Prior to working for the city of Battleground, Lacey was a barista at Luckman Coffee in Woodland. She graduated from Woodland High School and the Cascadia Technical Academy Criminal Justice Program in 2021. She completed her associate's degree in 2022 at Lower Columbia College, and then transferred to Washington State University of Vancouver, where she earned her bachelor's degree in social sciences, majoring in criminal justice and sociology with a minor in psychology. She thinks the best training she did prepare for law enforcement career was the Criminal Justice Program at Cascadia Technical Academy, which has a absolutely phenomenal program. And she did so in the last two years of her high school. She also started training in jiu-jitsu as part of her career preparation. She now enjoys it as a sport and a hobby. She enjoys just about everything sports-related, and in her off time, she enjoys being outside, reading, and spending quality time with her family and friends, all of whom are here tonight. So I'd like each one of them to, to step up and just say just a little, little something, and then, then we'll do some photos. Okay, Lacey? Um, Lacey?
I just want to say thank you guys for this opportunity. Thank you to the city, to the Battleground Police Department. Thank you to all my friends and family. Everyone who's here has supported me in one way or another, and so I just want to say thank you to all of you guys who are here to support me tonight.
What she said? No, same. I want to thank Council of the City of Battleground for allowing me this opportunity to serve you guys. My wife, first and foremost, being there through every, literally everything. And then a bunch, a lot of my friends, some of them that actually worked for the department, you know, kept pushing me, pushing me. And I was like, God, let's do this. So same, thank you guys for this opportunity. Yeah.
I think, I think we'll administer the oath now.
Madam.
Yep.
Raise the stuff. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and of the state of Washington. I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics and will diligently and impartially perform all duties of police officer for the City of Battleground, County of Clark, State of Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law. Please join me in welcoming our new officers.
Waiting for it, yeah. Oh, now we can get down to the nitty-gritty. Not the, the not-so-fun stuff.
Okay, great. What an exciting day to have all the family and friends here. Thank you, officers. Okay, we have a guest here from C-TRAN. Taylor is going to talk about the twenty forty-five plan update. And you may have heard that Current's coming to town, so. Please, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. Happy to.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. My name is Taylor I. I'm the Director of Planning and Service Delivery at C-TRAN. Sorry for fumbling there, recent title change. It's new to me. I want to thank you all for having us here this evening to talk about two really exciting projects coming up. One that is right around the corner and the Current coming to Battleground, and another that is looking a little bit farther out, our twenty forty-five plan. So we'll go through a little bit of each of those this evening. The Current is coming to Battleground with our changes this September. C-TRAN makes changes to service three times every year. Typically, in September is our larger change to service. And, and that is very much the case this year. We have a number of, of major changes occurring throughout our system. One of those that we're very excited about and very happy to have Mayor McCoy really championing on the C-TRAN board is the introduction of the Current in Battleground. The Current is a zone-based transit system that operates a lot like Uber and Lyft, or for those of you that have seen our C-Van paratransit vehicles, similar to that service. Within the new zone, people will be able to use the Current to go to any two points or between any two points within the City of Battleground. There is no eligibility restrictions on this service and there are no specific requirements for why you might want to be riding. You can use it for any trip, whether that's going to school, going to work, going to the park, or doing grocery shopping. This will be a seven-day-a-week service that's available throughout the entire city of Battleground. So that's the full city limits. Five thirty a.m. to seven p.m. on weekdays and eight a.m. to six p.m. on weekends. With this service, it will provide on-demand, curb-to-curb, shared-vehicle transit trips within the city. And again, there are no eligibility restrictions on use. So on the slide there on the left is a map with some of the common destinations we anticipate through the service. This is a service that C-TRAN operates in a few different areas of Clark County today, including La Center, Ridgefield, Camas, Washougal, Salmon Creek, and WSU Vancouver, as well as two smaller zones near downtown Vancouver. Again, anyone can ride the Current. Trips can be booked from right now to up to two days in advance. So there's a lot of flexibility and that's really the intention of this service to be available when people need it, but also to be reliable for them to book in advance. With the service, people are able to do real-time trip planning. You can see where your vehicle is, when it's approaching, where it will pick you up. And you can go anywhere, again, within the Battleground city limits with that service. And we expect many people to use that to only go between two places in Battleground. But we also know that there are going to be a number of people using it to connect on to other C-TRAN services like Route Seven to go into the City of Vancouver, urban Clark County, and points beyond. The Current uses these vans that you see here in front of you. They are ten-passenger vans. They are all Lyft-equipped, so they can carry two people and mobility devices at one time. You can put a bike on front. They are all C-TRAN vehicles, all C-TRAN drivers. You can pay onboard with our C-TRAN HOP FastPass payment system and transfer for free to other routes within our network. And very importantly, again, all of the vehicles are Lyft-equipped, fully ADA compliant and accessible, which has been a great advantage of this system and something that we're looking forward to bringing through more of Battleground as a really accessible, usable service throughout the city. A little bit about the service today. The service can be booked online by calling our operations center or through a mobile app. Most people do book through a mobile app. And again, it's a lot like booking a trip with Uber or Lyft. You type in where you are, or it just knows because it has your location, and then you put in where you want to go. And it will find the nearest available or scheduled trip time in order to take you there. Typically, people wait about twenty minutes for a trip to be available if they're booking a trip right now, which, when you consider most of the C-TRAN system where our routes operate about one bus every thirty minutes, that's more frequent than is available through much of the system. Typically, people are taking trips that are just over four miles, so certainly outside of a walkable distance. And usually, about two-thirds of our trips have more than one booking party onboard. So this isn't just a taxi service or a private limo service. It's something that we are seeing a lot of shared-vehicle use and it is certainly more of an efficient service than we initially really expected it to be. So we're very happy with the numbers that we're seeing from the service today. And again, we're very excited to be bringing it into Battleground this September, again, September fourteenth. And I'll also note that with the launch of the Current on September fourteenth, we're also making some other small changes in Battleground, including adding some additional evening trips on Route Seven on weekdays, as well as earlier and later trips on Route Seven on weekends. And I'll transition now to the second reason that we're happy to be here this evening. And that is to talk about C-TRAN twenty forty-five. C-TRAN twenty forty-five is our long-range transit plan. It is the guiding document for C-TRAN over the next twenty years. It's much like the City of Battleground's comprehensive plan or transportation system plan. It develops policies, investments, and priorities for C-TRAN over the next twenty years. It is how we look for service improvements, identify new transit options we may want to introduce in the county, identify capital project needs, ensure transit equity throughout the county and throughout our system, and maintain financial sustainability. We are now getting towards the latter part of our plan development process. We spent much of twenty twenty-four doing a rigorous analysis of the county today, our existing system performance today, as well as a robust public outreach campaign that included open houses in every jurisdiction, a meeting with staff from each jurisdiction, and a lot of coordination with some of our local stakeholders like NGOs, nonprofits, the Council for Homeless, the local housing authorities, and others. And through both our existing conditions analysis and that engagement and outreach, we heard a lot about where people want to go on the C-TRAN system that they're not able to today, what is or is not working for them, and what we may want to be prioritizing for investments in the future, both in terms of new service and capital project investments. And over much of the fall and winter of last year, we ingested all of that information and feedback and developed a vision network and conceptual plan and projects. And that's a little bit of what we'll go through here today. And we are now just at the start of our second outreach phase, again, visiting every jurisdiction, speaking with councils, again, with staff, community organizations, and others to see if we hit the mark on what that Vision Network for twenty forty-five looks like. And this is a small look at that, focused on the Battleground and North County area. I'm happy to pull up other portions of this if, if there's interest from the council. Mayor McCoy knows from his time at our C-TRAN Board Workshop that it's very easy to go well over ninety minutes talking about this. But to highlight a little bit of what we've identified as Vision Network investments in the Battleground and North County area. Some opportunities that we've identified include improved service frequency on Route Seven, so making that service run more often than every thirty minutes. It's one of our highest growth routes in the system. It's continually growing upwards of ten percent a year, which is right in line with the system, if not exceeding that, and, and certainly well, doing very well nationwide. We're also looking at opportunities to improve service connections with Yakalt. We were out at the Yakalt Town Council last Monday and had a great conversation with them about opportunities to provide new weekend service, but also more daily trips, as well as new east and west connections. That was something we heard a lot about from our initial outreach phase. And two of those opportunities that we've identified here include, one, a connection between Battleground and downtown Ridgefield along 502 and Pioneer Street. These are two quickly growing areas with a lot of employment opportunities, not to mention a lot of residential and housing growth that. not to mention a lot of residential and housing growth that, that we would look to connect, as well as returning a service connection between battleground and Salmon Creek and the I-five corridor. That was something that we had in the past. Um, but in the interest of, of service preservation, at one point, we consolidated that service through the I-two oh-five corridor into Vancouver Mall Transit Centre. Uh, we think we have an opportunity to return that service uh, and help connect people more quickly to the I-five corridor, which will help them connect into places like downtown Vancouver, downtown Portland. But also something we've heard a lot about is uh, better service for students that are heading to places like WSU Vancouver. Uh, connections to education are really an important part of what we see in the vision. We're making a lot of investments towards that today with our, our new Vine Route that is under construction to WSU Vancouver. And we think we can augment that through um, future connections from places like battleground uh, into the future. And supplementing this service vision, uh, we do know that we're going to have a number of capital project needs uh, in order to allow us to make this growth. And some of what we heard from the community include the need for bus stop improvements, uh, focusing on accessibility, safety and comfort. So making sure that everyone is able to access a bus stop, no matter um, any mobility challenges that they may have and that they feel comfortable and safe waiting for the bus. Improvements to speed and reliability throughout the system so that people taking trips by transit can make them at a rate that is more comparable to someone that may be able to take their own vehicle for that same trip, as well as technology enhancements to improve rider experience and supporting C-Trans operations, facilities, technologies, vehicles and so forth. Uh, some of the areas that we're focusing this include what we call service quality improvements, facilities, fleet and technology and programs and policy. Uh, those service quality improvements kind of catch a number of different things. Um, many of you are likely familiar with our Vine Bus Rapid Transit System. It's something that we're very proud of. It's something that has seen a lot of recent investment. And as a result of that, we've seen really significant ridership gains and improvements in the quality of service on those corridors. Uh, we have a few more of those projects that are currently underway. However, those projects are quite expensive and with the corridors that we would like to focus on in the future, we don't quite see the level of ridership that, that significant investment is needed for. So we would like to begin to kind of ramp up ridership in those corridors by making similar improvements at a little bit of a lower cost rate. One of those corridors where we would likely expect to do that would be the Hundred and Seventeenth Avenue, five oh-three corridor connecting here into battleground. Uh, there's a number of others throughout the county where we think we would like to make those kinds of improvements that would be focused on, again, safety, security, providing information and creating a faster trip for our riders. And we also know that in order to continue to grow our network outside of that urbanized Vancouver area, we need to create new facilities for our operations where buses can dwell and lay over in a out-of-lane and safe place where they're not disrupting traffic and maybe able to park for a few minutes, but also somewhere where our riders are able to transfer and wait comfortably. Uh, we've identified this community hub term as essentially a smaller transit centre that will help us facilitate operations again in places like Ridgefield, uh, battleground and Camas-Washougal so that we can grow the network farther to the north. Today, one of our real constraints is that all of our routes have to start or end at a transit centre because that's where our operators are and vehicles are able to lay over. And that puts a big constraint on how we're able to send for service farther into the county and make those improvements um, and connections elsewhere. And these community hubs would allow us to do that. Within the context of this plan, we're not looking at specific locations or um, engineering details. We're identifying facility and improvement needs. And so that's really what, what we're working to do here. We will follow this with future study to look at exactly what that may need to, to be into the future. And as I mentioned, we are working our way through this plan. Uh, it's, it's been a significant effort organizationally, uh, one that we're very proud of and we're very proud of the, the work that we're putting out into the public so far in the development of that vision network. Uh, that vision network as well as these capital projects are uncon- fiscally on, financially unconstrained, pardon me. Meaning we know that today we can't build all of these things. We can't provide all of this service. And so what we're doing is developing a vision that we can get public feedback about, community feedback about, and help us prioritize those investments into the future through a financial scenario planning process. Uh, as we take back the feedback that we're hearing through this engagement period, we're going to be working through uh, some of those investment scenarios and looking at how we can implement those into the future. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions if there is time or you have any of me. Or um, as I mentioned, I do have some other slides that I'd be happy and are in your packet uh, reflecting the vision network for the rest of the community.
Counsel, any questions? Go for it.
Uh, I kind of, I kind of wish we would have invited the senior group here.
They, they presented the senior group last meeting, I believe?
Oh, okay. Cause that's who I'm excited for this, for, I mean, I'm a little biased, yeah, for our seniors just because, I mean, we have so many in the Bee Gees Village. There's no sidewalks, there's nowhere to walk. They're on an island by themselves with no grocery stores. So I could really see this as a benefit for them to get to the grocery store, doctor's appointments, enjoy our city rather than just be stuck out on that island. So thankful for that, for you for presenting this and for the mayor making that happen. Thanks.
Yeah, C-Trans was willing to go and give that presentation, so thank them. I didn't do anything. Councilmember Kipers.
Thank you for this great information, um, Taylor. I was wondering, can you confirm, is it one vehicle that we'll have or is it multiple?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question and it's going to change throughout the day and throughout different days of the week. One of the great things about the, this type of system is that it's dynamic and flexible. And so we can pull resources from other places if they're needed for demand. We do expect demand to really go right off the bat here as opposed to some of the other zones that we've started in. We do expect at a minimum, we'll have a vehicle in battleground at all times that service is open and available.
I had another. Um, do you anticipate kids riding like, I want to go hang out with Josie today?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you have any kind of projections on what percentages you see or you anticipate?
We don't yet.
Okay.
Um, this is an area that has so much latent demand that we've, we've identified for a service like this that I, I don't know that our projections would, would necessarily be beneficial or create a, a biased picture for us.
Makes sense.
We're going to be able to get a huge wealth of data from the utilization of this service. And, and we think you may have noticed it in the vision, longer into the future. This is going to help us understand how we can continue to make service improvements in battleground that may be more of a reliable fixed route type of service like the seven.
Sure, that makes sense. And do you anticipate in September, you said you're going to uh, launch this on the fourteenth?
Yes.
Is that, are you going to have some kind of a ribbon cutting or uh, what, how's, how's you gonna, what's the splash?
That's a great question. Um, you know, I will unfortunately not be here, but uh, we have a number of new services that we're actually going to be starting in September, including a new route on Hundred and Twelfth Avenue in Vancouver. Um, so we may have a little competition for what a ribbon cutting looks like, but I think that uh, it's probably a safe bet that we'll be able to, to have someone up here to kick off a, a new service like this.
Great, thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming out. Um, this has been a dream of ours for a long time, ever since the connector was operating, so quite a while ago. Um, it's awesome to see that it's actually happening and I get to see it happen. And I'm really excited, like you said, for the seniors, for kids just wanting to go to the skate park, go to their friend's house, whatever. I'm just really happy that um, we're going to be able to get around battleground a little bit easier now, so thank you.
And I'll, I'll just add in uh, to Councilmember Kiper's question. I know I talked to the uh, rep from Camas and he said there, the percentage of youth that uses the current in Camas, I, it's pretty, pretty extensive. It's their biggest user, I believe. Um, so uh, but also, and, and Taylor mentioned it, uh, when I was talking to leadership there, you know, the data that the current provides, uh, C-Trans will be able to analyze that and say, oh, everybody's going from the village to, you know, to XYZ. May- maybe we need to stop in the village. And so um, this will really inform them or create more of a spoke type hub. So it's, it's pretty exciting for battleground. Um, and you know, of all the routes, Route Seven, I think is one of the few above COVID ridership. So uh, this is an area that does use the bus, uh, and it's nice to see C-Trans investing in it. And now we just, you know, not to be greedy, but a few more nice bus stops, maybe with some rain covers and, and off the main street and that'd be awesome. But we really do appreciate the partnership that C-Trans provides and the responsiveness on this issue has been great.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, just one quick question. Um, with the current system, uh, how many vehicles total do you have within the whole network of current, you know?
We're, we're currently operating eight vehicles at our peak period. Um, that is, is something that is going to be subject to change based on the demand that we see. We know that the, the most demand that we see today is out of Camas and Washougal. Uh, that's going to continue to grow and change as we modify what the service looks like and how we're operating it.
Very good, thank you. All right, I think we've exhausted all our questions, Taylor. Thanks so much for coming up. That brings us to citizens communication portion of the meeting. Uh, I only have one signed up in person. Do we have anybody online clerks?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And this person's done it before, so I'm not going to go through my spiel. Um, so I think she knows the rules. So Ms. Jessica?
Hello, City Council. They, they didn't do this for the current, but I um, recently got my HOP card and I'm so excited about this. And I'm saying this out of encouragement and, and excitement and not criticism, but I already know people that could use it at five AM and go well past six and seven, like push it till ten as soon as you can. Anyways, thank you, this is exciting. Um, and I just wanted to say um, thank you so much for the proclamation today. Thank you. We had a, we've had a couple more community events. Um, the weather wasn't as cooperative, but for National Night Out, it was pretty good. It was pretty good. Um, and I just um, want to say thank you to Lieutenant Keller, who um, was a point person for me um, being part of that. So um, it's great having it at Kiwanis. Sometimes I'm not sure if I want it back on the other side. It's, it's like I want it all, but it's not, you can't have it all. So it's a great location over in the shade. Um, and it's also a great location over um, on the patio area. Um, and then um, another community event is I helped um, put on the Battleground Pride Event this weekend. The weather was muggy, um, but um, still not terrible and it was a really great event. And one thing I want to say about that is um, the folks that work at the event centre, they're always very helpful, very kind and professional, and I really appreciate all of them. And um, I know you've got a new, a lot of new staff there right now. And um, I just really like getting to um, work with and meet all of them. And um, that's all I have, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Jessica. Anybody in the audience that not signed up that wanted to take their three minutes? All right, with that, I will close uh, this portion of the meeting with citizens communication and move on consent agenda. Uh, what is your pleasure for consent agenda, counsel?
Um, Mayor, I'd like to ask um, for items I and J to be set aside for discussion or at least a couple of questions.
That's fine, yeah. Anything else needs to be pulled out? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for A through H.
I'll make a motion to approve A through H of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, and the, we will now move on to uh, item I, which is the Portland Loue purchase approval. Councilmember?
I have just two really simple questions in regards to the part, uh, Portland Loue. We're purchasing it, but where are the locations exactly? Are we like replacing the old ones? Are we keeping the old bathrooms? Sorry to put you.
Oh, no worries.
Okay.
Um, the location is um, in that kind of, when you're in the parking lot and you have the concrete area as you first walk in, it'll be on the south side of that, kind of just east of the existing restrooms.
Okay.
Check out a map, it'd be easier to show.
You know, are you, yeah, because you're mentioning the southeast side. So that's where the, on the side of the current building where the bathroom is.
Yeah, they'll be a little bit east of the, the current building, but on the south side of that concrete pad that's there.
So right before you walk into, like, you're, when you get out of your car, you've got the bathroom like right here and then the picnic table's right there. It's going to be like in front of the picnic table, but.
No.
Way far east in front of the bathroom.
Yeah, it's farther south of the, the picnic tables.
Further south of the picnic, oh, it's even further south of the picnic tables. It's, I know. Okay, so it's going to be in the grassy field between the pickleball courts and the restroom and picnic area. They gotta, okay, because it's just very small, right? That little grass, so you know, well, yeah, okay, not small, but yeah, nothing else is there. Yeah, because it's like where they dug up to do the little channeling. It'll be like, just probably just past that, nor, north of that little channel. So, okay, I'm trying to picture it. There, are we, one or two?
Uh, two.
So where's the second guy going to go?
Uh, they're right next to each other.
They're right next to each other. Okay, that one's probably going to be more on the concrete.
Yeah, I guess it's here, I'll pull up the map. It's kind of southeast of the existing bathrooms.
Okay. While you look that up, I'll ask for my final question on that one. And so the great thing about the Portland Loo's is no graffiti, you know, all this, there's a lot of good benefits to this, including a nice restroom that we don't currently have. Um, one of my questions is, are we going to have one of those needle disposal containers in the restroom? Because I, I mean, my preference is to not have one simply because we're not in Portland. We don't have those issues and I kind of don't want to be like, here, this is where you can do it. Look, there's a box, but. So I was just, that's for transparency, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, unless, we don't have that as an added feature.
Okay.
I do not know if it's a standard that, that comes with it.
Okay.
I don't believe it is, but don't quote me on that either. Um, but it's south, so it's east of the picnic shelter and southeast of the existing bathroom. So it's over here in this, I don't know if my mouse is up there, but um, in this grass area right here.
Which I think currently just has like one bench or something, right, in it?
Yeah, there's like a rock or some, it, there's pretty much just grass there.
Okay, I mean, there's a whole field, so, okay, okay. Thank you, that's all I got for, for that item.
Do you want to ask?
Who else has anything before I move on to the next one?
I do actually have a question about Loo's. What?
Once they're installed, are they permanent or is this something that could be moved around?
They're a permanent structure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, ask your questions about item J.
Well, now that makes me wonder, what's the size of those things? Do you have a? Sorry.
I do not, they're pretty good size. So if you've ever been down to Esther Short, um, they've got three of them right there next to the old restroom. Uh, they've got them at the waterfront in Vancouver as well. So they're pretty decently sized.
Four, four foot square?
What's that?
By four by four, something like that. Three by three?
Yeah, I think they're, they're.
New ADA requirements caused it to be at least five and a half feet wide.
Yeah. Yeah, they're.
Yeah, like eight by ten. I know, right? I'll have to Google, yeah, okay. Um, okay, since nobody has any other questions for that one, okay, I'm going to go into J for the Southeast Grace Avenue Phase Two Local Agency Agreement. Um, this one, because of Phase One, we've already. This one, because of Phase One, we've already gone out for a bid. Yeah? So we've already, is Phase One and Phase Two both underneath the same contract using the same developer or?
So Phase One was the stretch from Eaton to Rasmussen. So that's fully complete.
Okay.
Phase Two is the stretch from Rasmussen to Main Street. We're out, or it's in design. So we have a consultant working on that with staff. That same consultant has a right-of-way subconsultant that will ultimately help us with the purchasing process.
Okay, okay. So because of the consultant, the first step is doing the right-of-way purchases. And then after that?
Yeah, since, so how this works is since we have federal funds, we have to use a local agency agreement to essentially get that obligated. Once we approve it here, it gets sent to WashDOT. WashDOT goes through a quick process and then they approve it. That essentially means those funds are obligated, which means we can start the process. The first step is we turn in a right-of-way plan, which shows all the property that we're going to buy.
Okay.
They'll approve that. Then we do appraisals. Then I come back to this board and say, hey, we've got all the appraisals done. Please give me permission to start buying the properties at fair market value. And then that's like you see on Eaton where over time you'll start to see them on consent as we settle with the property owners. And then once that's all done, then we can move on to construction.
Okay. Yeah, because I was like, I was kind of wanting, because I know it's going to take a while. And again, I keep thinking of my seniors on the island out there. And I'm like, is there any way that we could be prioritizing the sidewalks from fourth to sixth? Just because I, I mean, I'm sure we can get those right-of-ways. I'm, I don't know anything, but I would hope that we would get those done sooner than possibly some other properties that might take longer. And that's why I was like, are we able to prioritize?
No, it's all a bundled project based on all of the funding. So we have to buy all the right-of-way. And when we finally have the right-of-way, then we can start on the whole.
That's what I was afraid of.
You can't really, without getting into a big mess with the funding, you can't really jump and do pieces.
Okay. That's why I was like, because I knew one of the things was, I thought you were going to come back at me and say, well, it makes, it's more cost effective to, you know.
I mean, it's also effective to do it at once, but with the way the funding sources are, it, it's pretty much impossible to break it up without starting over.
Okay. Thank you, councilors, for letting me ask my questions.
Are you good? So, and that's just for those out in the audience, that Grace Avenue Phase Two, that's why we could not start right-of-way purchases until we got this approved. That's why this has been a, a long time coming and a federally funded project. So that's the red tape. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval of items I and J.
So I, oh, go for it. Go for it.
Who was that?
That was Kuiper's.
Her second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second for approval of items I and J on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Brings us to the business portion of the meeting. It looks like our illustrious clerk who is on her birthday pre, pre-birthday day.
Yes.
So what a way to celebrate. Welcome.
My very first presentation to a council. So I'm going to, I'm going to do it from right here, Rob. Okay. So I have the clicker, so I have the power. Okay. So first, uh, I want to share with all of you the results of the 2024 J-Lark Public Records Report for the City of Battleground. So I submitted this. This is the second consecutive year in a row that I have submitted this for the city. These are the only years that this has ever been submitted for the city. This is because of Washington State Statute pursuant to RCW 40.14.06. Agencies that spend more than $100,000 responding to public records requests and managing and retaining records must file a report to the J-Lark. So tonight, I'm going to share the 2023, 2024 trends in our public records requests and the costs and the staffing that goes into this. So hold on to your hats. Sorry, it's a little small, my first presentation. Okay. So here we're looking at the request comparison, the number of requests received in these years. So in 2024, we received 13% more requests than we received in 2023. We received 968. We had 14 remaining open from 2023. So that put us at 982 requests for 2024. The majority of the requests that this city receives are for police records. So in 2024, that added up to 746 police requests with 221 for the city. However, you'll notice that in 2023, the city, these are requests not for police records, only received 148. The thing about requests that are received by the city is that they are becoming more and more complex. That, and I'll go into that a little bit further in this presentation regarding the time it takes to satisfy these requests. Let's see. So because the city did not file J-Lark report prior to 2023, information is limited regarding costs to, of records management and staff time around public records requests. However, I can tell you that since 2019, we have received 29% requests more per year overall. Oh, I should do that. Response times. Okay. So it is very important that our public records officers prioritize requests and respond in a timely fashion. That is by statute. In 2024, we actually closed 4% more requests in that period of time. We closed 801 of those 968 requests in 2024. Actually, 982, including the 14 that were open. Now, 459 of those requests, as you see here, were partially denied. So the majority of police records requests were for police reports. This really impacted our ability to close within the fifth, the five business days. And that's because they generally are only asking for police reports. Police reports are often just one single file. And it's, even though we only have four police records officers dealing with this many requests, they were able to, to get those closed in a reasonable amount of time within five business days. However, many, as I stated before, many of the public records requests received by the city were quite large, complex, and took way more than five days to complete. Which is why you're seeing there, we have a median of two days for closure and an average of 6.2 days overall to close a request. So some of these complexities include requests asking for any and all records, which is extraordinarily broad if you think about the type of records the City of Battleground has. Often they're asking for correspondence. Often they're not, they're not very clear and not responding to requests for clarification. So if we can work that request, we must work that request through and through. So even if we, maybe we don't have all of the information we need, we still need to try to think of every possible thing that requestor might be looking for by law. We also had some complicated requests in 2024 that required scrutiny for redaction exemptions. So we're looking through every single document in a complicated request that may require redaction. And also, we've had requests that we, we require legal consultation. So we've been spending time with our public records attorney talking about requests and what we need to produce and what we need to redact. So categorical exemptions were applied to 459 requests. With 13, as you see there, denied in full. The most commonly applied exemptions to these records were investigative records, active investigation records. Those cannot be released during an active investigation until it's over. And even still, we need to go through those and determine whether there are parts, say attorney-client privilege, that needs to be redacted. Personal information from those police reports. So those folks over there at PD working those requests are often also doing redactions of driver's license numbers, social security numbers, juvenile offense records, and also certain records in an employee's personnel file. Those were some of the most common exemptions applied to the records. Okay. Here we go. Fees collected. This is possibly the most dissatisfying part of being a public records officer. In 2024, the city collected, as far as the data that I could compile, $24 in response, allowable fees. That's down 87% from 2023 where we collected a whole whopping $191. Now, fees are limited by statute. We are limited in our ability to collect fees. At present, we have implemented statutory default costs to collect those fees. So these default charges can be adopted if calculating actual cost is deemed unduly burdensome. And so unfortunately, due to the restrictions imposed, we do not recover fees for many of our requests that fall below those limits. There are limits. I provided that RCW there for anybody who wants to take a look at it. And as I stated, an example would be our police records requests do not meet that, that statute limit because we're only producing maybe one record and we are redacting it, but we're only producing one record. That's not enough records for us to charge a requestor. Additionally, agencies cannot charge for time spent redacting information from records except for redacts, redactions of body camera video recordings in certain circumstances, not all. So there, however, there is another form of, or way for us to charge fees, and those are called actual costs. We can charge for the actual costs of copying records, including staff time spent copying and sending records, electronic or paper. We also have a, an additional flat fee option. Agencies may charge a flat fee provided they reasonably estimate and document that the actual costs would be at least that amount. So there, one thing to note is that a barrier is removed from those fees. As far as inspection in person is free for all records requests. So any person who cannot afford to pay a fee can actually come and view the records in person for free. Additionally, agencies may waive fees at the discretion of the public records officer as set by the city's public records policy. The goal is for that to not be the norm. So I am currently analyzing this J-Lark data. I'm also conferring with my colleagues and there are a few other cities that are, have adopted this actual fee or actual cost. And I'm planning a timed case study for the purpose of proposing the adoption of actual costs to the councils at a future meeting. Now, keep in mind that these actual costs are not going to be nearly what it costs for us to process requests. They will be, for example, Kennewick, Washington, their initial fee is $3.85. However, at this time, because of the way that we are processing these requests, many of our requests are not accumulating any fees. So I think, I believe that it would be appropriate for this, for staff and for the city to recoup these fees or recover these fees because it, every penny counts for our city, every, every penny, even five cents. Okay. Here are our cost comparisons. Now, keep in mind that the City of Battleground is not alone when it comes to the rising costs of public records requests across the state and indeed across the nation. So you can see that the total cost of responding to public records requests in 2024 rose by 29% from 2023, with the average cost per request up by 15%. This is due to the increasing volume and growing complexity of requests, which are becoming increasingly intricate, requiring more staff time, technical expertise, expertise and legal review to fulfill. This is driven by factors like technological advances, evolving citizen expectations and the commercialization of data. Additionally, this trend highlights the importance of agencies having robust systems in place to manage and respond to these requests effectively and the vital importance of records management. So yes. This is a little small for everybody. So we're moving on here to records management. I wanted you guys to see this. I know that this is freaky numbers on here. But we are a city of records. Everything is a record. If you think about it, your text message, your voicemail, everything. And it is vitally important that the city manage these records according to the law and maintain them, retain them according to the law. So as part of this report, and as required by this report, I compiled and provided these estimated costs. Keep in mind that staff time is estimated. And also, in 2024, I added additional staff members to staff cost. Because as I am working here, I'm discovering that more staff are actually managing and retaining records. It is indeed the policy of the city for all staff to do so. So while this does not include all staff members of the city, it does include all those who actually manage and retain records. I wanted to give you guys a little bit of definition here, the cost of systems. So you can see here are our two pie charts. You can see that the staff cost is significantly higher than in 2023. You can see we're balancing out with our systems and our services. The cost of systems is data and records management, storage systems, email storage and vaulting systems, and social media text capture tools for all of our departments. So this is all of our systems used at the city. The cost of services purchased, this includes the cost of off-site records management and storage. So when we cannot fit it here, we send it over to Iron Mountain and they store our records for us. It also includes the cost of shredding services. I'm sure you can imagine there are confidential records that require shredding. So, and then of course, our staff costs. These include base wages plus benefits calculated for the portion of time spent on managing and retaining records. So I will state that overall, I do expect staff, services and systems costs to decrease So I will state that overall, I do expect staff, services and systems costs to decrease after our city has implemented our new records management system, Laserfish, which was approved by City Council, thank you very kindly, last year. This system, the goal of your city clerk is to digitize all records within the city other than those that cannot, that we have to maintain originals by law. But 99.9% of the records within the city can be digitized, scanned and tossed. I want everything digitized. And Laserfish is much more than some kind of file storage system. It, with this system, we will standardize our file naming convention and our file structures across the city. We will also have a public facing portal where people will be able to see our records, other than those that are confidential. This is going to greatly assist our public records officers because they are going to, through the new portal that we have just implemented, they will be able to point and say, hey, look right there, there they are. Done. Mic drop. The next thing is that we will have automated records retention. This will be a process. And the city clerk's office will oversee before anything is destroyed. But we will actually be able to maintain our records for as long as they need to be kept and no longer, so we will not be storing records we shouldn't be. That is a huge feat for any city. We will also have workflows and forms for all departments, uploading documents. There'll be, there's AI built into there. There's all kinds of wonderful, amazing things that we are going to implement. Now, it's going to take years to do this. But I will leave this legacy to you. We'll also have keywords and metadata, cross-reference searches for all documents. We'll be able to find our records, by golly Moses. So moving on to statewide trends. Overall, since 2019, over our entire state, records requests have increased by 35%. They're steadily rising. While the 2024 J-LarC public records requests reporting data statewide is not yet available because we just reported it, we've been seeing this increase. All of us have, public records officers and clerks alike. This has led to increased administrative costs and in some cases has contributed to delays in fulfilling requests. Also, the addition of new PRA exemptions in 2024 contributes to additional staff time spent redacting records. The city cannot charge a fee for redacting. We cannot charge for that other than body worn camera in certain circumstances. Keep that in mind, that is time consuming. And also, as I stated, agencies beyond the city of Battleground in Washington State are considering their options for charging fees related to public records requests. And some agencies are moving towards actual costs rather than the continued adoption of statutory costs. So our key takeaways are, as I stated here from this presentation, show us that both records management and public records request costs are steadily climbing. As such, the city clerk's office is determined to continue to review these costs, find ways to lessen them by optimizing our records management systems, thereby reducing staff time spent locating and retaining records. I intend to explore new options for public records request fees and I'm always preparing for continued growth. Questions?
Council questions?
Always take one, right? Right. I was wondering, do you know with those requests, do you have the percentages on citizens' requests versus like in-house requests? Because you mentioned a lot about the police and I keep thinking about like maybe the court system. And I know I've seen some records requests and it's just based on, it looked like it was specifically maybe somebody in the office was needing to look at something over in maybe public works or something like.
So internally, departments do not, we call that within the scope of work. So we reach out, I would reach out to Mark's, for example, and he would send me the document. So however, an employee can, outside of work, can submit a public records request. We've had some of those. Most of our requests are from individuals and businesses. We also do get requests from law firms. That would be third in line. And we also do have other agencies that make requests. However, many of those we consider within the scope of business, particularly police departments, say DCYF or something like that. That would not be considered a public records request.
Yeah, that answers my question. One last one is, do you know how many, and this, do you know how many, like the number of requests? Maybe you don't obtain, you don't ask where they're from. But are, do we have some like citizens that are outside of the city making requests? And the only reason why at versus in the city, because the only reason why I ask this is because you're talking about coming forward in the future and maybe putting together a resolution or a request to start, you know, having fees for our citizens. And I would be more inclined to maybe put one on if you're an outside resident versus, you know, a citizen that's already paid their taxes.
The actual costs still fall under that state statute. You cannot discern, you cannot say, well, you're from out of town, you, you're going to have to pay. Everything is set by standard. And there can be no, yeah, you cannot, you cannot do that by law. Mm-hmm. Yes. However, so people can make requests anonymously. And in that case, we wouldn't know where they were or anything about them. Oftentimes though, they will put maybe what city or state they're from. We do, we've had requests from outside the country. We've had requests, yes. So if you think about it, the records of the city belong to the people. And we only can redact or exempt records by statute. And so those records must be permitted to anyone who wants to see them. And the fees, we can only charge what the law will allow us to charge.
That's my role, sir?
Yeah, not so much a question. But I just wanted to say, Liz, I appreciate you. You are a vital member of this team. And I could not think of somebody more qualified and apt to be taking on this laser fish thing in the future here. Your thoroughness and attention to detail is above and beyond. And so just, I don't know if I can speak for all of council, but I think I can and probably all of staff. We appreciate the heck out of you and just thanks for everything you do.
Well, thank you very much, sir. If there are no further questions?
Doesn't look like it. Knock that off the bingo card. Next up, looks like we have a sub-area plan.
Yes, we have another presentation for you. I will introduce our partner here in a moment. I just want to thank you for your time. We're excited to be sharing the work that's been completed on the Old Town Subarea Plan. And I just wanted to clarify, when we talk about Old Town, we're referring to the section of East Main Street that's between Parkway and the Event Center. The Old Town Subarea Plan project began in the spring of 2024. So it's been going on for about 18 months now. And the objective of this project was to prepare a detailed plan that will identify actionable steps to revitalize our Old Town. This plan is kind of a long-term tool that we will use as a roadmap for future improvements. We did share that full draft plan document with you all separately. It's a rather large file for you to review. But this evening, we'll just be presenting kind of a high-level summary of the big ideas. We will, we have shared this with Planning Commission on July 30th and they were excited and supportive of it. So we're definitely wanting to get your thoughts or questions on this project. And then we'll be back next month to ask that you formally adopt it. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Jason Graff with First 40 Feet to highlight some of those big ideas of the project.
Thank you, Kristin. Oh, wow, this is going to work, huh? Right or left? Let's see. Yeah, it works. Perfect. You're off the hook, Robert. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is exciting. Year and a half's effort, I mean largely shepherded by Kristin, Mark and Alicia. So thank you to all three of them for sort of carrying us through and getting us in front of the right people and finding places for us to meet folks and get in front of you all. So kudos to them. We mentioned the process. Geez, we're finally at the tail end here. So it's really exciting to have a document. It's a great opportunity to have people explore that. Planning Commission were really great and we took, I don't know, 60, 90 minutes in conversation with them about the plan. And they were complimentary. And I think a lot of that has to do with just the conversations we had in the community. And so the slide behind you here is just the engagement that sort of helped guide us in understanding the issues, what you value as a community, what the opportunities might be, and then looking and exploring at what those opportunities would be and how that might translate into a plan. But it was a project advisory committee that led us from beginning to end, which was fantastic. We had a technical advisory committee. Taylor was one of those representatives behind me. He spoke earlier today with C-Trans that helped us as we were looking at kind of globally, the traffic issues that impact Main Street, but also the intersection of Parkway and Main Street as well. So they helped us think about how moving cars could allow us to look at Main Street in a slightly different way, to think about it more as a destination instead of a cut through. So the technical advisory committee were really helpful on that front. Anderson Derry spent a lot of time with us too in conversations about how traffic movement could affect their operations. And so it was great to talk to Jack and just understand how working dairy functions in, in an old town Main Street. We met with businesses. We had conversations with property owners, Optal, Urban Basics, the Maddox Group, of course, because they're doing so much stuff on the street. Owners of Pacificly U, Founders Mercantile, and all these people and businesses who are actively engaged in storefront improvements and expanding their businesses, the new print shop that came in next to Pacificly U. That was another group that engaged our storefront improvement folks, really trying to identify the kind of things that they might want to do in terms of color and lighting and signage. And so the idea is that it wasn't just kind of infrastructure and planning for the future, but building relationships with the businesses that are on the street and kind of learning with, from what they're doing to see how future investments in infrastructure are really supporting that lifeblood on the street. That's what attracts people to Main Street is the businesses and the investments in those buildings. And so the city plays a huge partner in maintaining that infrastructure. So a lot of the work of the plan is really thinking about what's it going to take to extend the life of this great street into the next 30, 50 years? And how can we celebrate it in a way that we, we haven't been able to do to date? So with that, we'll kind of get into some of the key elements of the plan. There's really sort of seven strategies that build around trying to identify what the identity of Old Town is. And you do have one and it was, it's pretty interesting. Thinking about the elements in the future that can contribute to Old Town as a place. So a great street where people feel safe and comfortable, crossing good intersections, where they can hang out with friends and family on a little wider sidewalk, where there's opportunities to extend the amount of time that they're downtown. Not just shop once and leave, but have lunch, meet friends, maybe purchase some goods, some home furnishings, whatever it is, come back for dinner. This whole idea that this is sort of the living room of the community is really what sort of inspired, I think, all of us to think about Main Street in that fashion. Being connected is important too, because as we know, Main Street is, that's a movement for vehicles, whether it's heavy trucks or cars. And there is sometimes a conflict when you're in the old, old town portion where you kind of want to hang out, but other folks want to move around. So we had to explore how we could provide alternatives to Main Street to allow all that traffic to move through and at the same time, let Main Street kind of function as a great place to hang out. And the partnerships are really that last piece of how do we build a coalition with the businesses and the city, all working together for sort of a common goal and a common interest? And Main Street is that place to do it. So we did focus a lot on, on infrastructure and looking at what the future needs were for stormwater and for sanitary sewer and water, all the things that none of us ever see, but are extremely important to a functioning downtown. And the other piece then was looking at, how can we manage this traffic problem that is kind of on Main Street and Parkway? And the high school contributes to that and through traffic contributes to that. And so we explored a range of alternatives to how do we move traffic around? And we looked at sort of regional movement. We looked at, how do you get to the businesses on Main Street? Because that's critically important, having on-street parking and, and the ability to get out of your car and cross the street and get to businesses. So you have all these conflicting concerns and issues. And then also, how can Old Town become a destination? How can we create wider sidewalks in a more comfortable environment at the same time move cars through? You know how hard that is? That, that took a few months just to figure that out. And we looked at a range of alternatives that were, let's do some traffic calming on Main Street. That wasn't working well because traffic was backing up in that scenario. Then we looked at an idea of, what if we created a couplet? So one-way Main Street from Grace to Fifth or Eighth, basically the McDonald's, and the other one-way direction on Southeast First. And you can get a lot of cars on that and move pretty quickly. But what you lose is the downtown because now all your businesses are only getting one-way traffic passing by and not the other traffic, which isn't great for retail. And it's more of an emphasis on cars moving quicker. So you get higher speeds, it becomes less attractive for Main Street to be a destination. So we landed on this idea of adding some capacity to Southeast First and giving drivers an option around Fifth, so further west of town, to choose Southeast First as a route to move through. So you can still come down on Main Street, but now we've added capacity on Southeast First. We've given you a way to move off of Main Street further to the west and take Southeast First all the way to Grace. And with the Grace Avenue improvements, making that great north-south connection between Rasmussen North, I think we've found sort of the sweet spot of how we can still allow through traffic because we've got Main Street and Southeast First. And that gives us some opportunities to look at Main Street a little bit differently, to think about traffic calming, curb extensions, things that make crossing the street easier, maybe slowing traffic down a bit because we know there's, there's options. You're not forced to be on Main Street. And so that helped guide us to think about, are there opportunities to widen sidewalks? If we can narrow the travel lanes a bit, we can add a couple of feet to each side. You, your sidewalks today are about eight feet in some areas. It may be up to 10. And so getting closer to 12 gave us an opportunity to have some space in front of a storefront where we see a lot of businesses putting goods and things out on the sidewalk, creating that seating area near the curb side and a place to get out of your car and room to do that while getting onto the sidewalk. So we're excited then about some designs of Main Street that really create this opportunity for it to be a destination. And largely that is because we think we've found some, a good balance of through traffic and Main Street as a destination. You can see some of the images here. Pacificly U was one of the greatest examples of, we were doing some initial conversations with, with that business owner. She was well into considering some concepts and alternatives and working with our team. And so to see projects happen in the middle of the planning project was probably one of the most exciting things. And one of the few opportunities where I actually see that, working in different cities all over Washington, Oregon. It, it was a unique, that was really unique, I think, to being in Battleground and we were really excited about that. Urban Basics is another, they're, they're going to go gangbusters on some improvements here too. They've just, they're a little more extensive in their efforts. We've probably already seen from Founders Mercantile, the work that they're doing. And I'll show some of the other ideas here about public gathering spaces. And they're one of the unique ones who are doing some interesting things in their private right of way. Every time I go by there, there's kids running around behind the picket fence and it's just such a, it's such a great opportunity. So the storefronts are going to play a key role in creating the great edges to this wonderful Main Street that hopefully we can all get to in the future. And then this idea of public gathering spaces is, how can we spend more time in, in, on Main Street? Central Park is a great sort of like community asset next to Wooden Creek. And is there maybe an opportunity for a small plaza or gathering space? And so there's a vacant lot that Lanes Funeral Home owns next to the barber shop. next to the barber shop and the, I'm forgetting the name of kid clothes. And so that might be an opportunity to test as a demonstration, a temporary public space. In our conversations with Lanes, they were open to that discussion. And so that's a way for maybe in the future, post-plan, to look at opportunities for creating some public gathering in that location. Privately, we've seen on, on private property, places like Founders that are creating spaces for people too. And it's what keeps people coming back. Even the Margarita Factory, great outdoor seating. The food carts have been really wonderful in terms of sort of walk-up and having that opportunity on that end of the corridor and on and on. The businesses are doing so much to bring the energy to Main Street. And I think that work, along with future improvements to the streetscape, I think is going to create a really unique setting, something to be really excited about. And of course, parking is the most exciting thing to talk about. And so that was, that was a fun discussion for a while. And really what we looked at is how do we improve the efficiency of parking on-street today? Some things we can do is where there's a lot of curb cuts, we can maybe consolidate those and then create some more on-street parking, curb-side. There are a number of businesses who access their parking from either Southeast First or Northeast First. So having dual access off both streets may be a consideration of closing some of those so we can create curb-side parking right on Main Street. You know, I've got kids and I teach them to always stop at intersections, but when you're walking mid-block and there's a bunch of driveways, I can never catch up to them. And it's always an anxiety for me as a parent. So there's some advantages to managing some of those curb cuts. The other is, maybe there's some opportunities to purchase some vacant or underutilized property on or near Main Street that could be used for a public parking. So we do have some considerations for maybe future acquisitions that could create sort of reserve of parking, fifty spaces where you come right off Parkway, you park once and you're just walking up and down the street. And you know, there's a lot of advantages to having that, where you only have curb-side parking. We talked to a number of property owners who might be considering infill and development. And so Optol was, was one of the folks we talked to. They've had previous plans for doing some townhome development near their chiropractic office. We talked to the owners of Tooks. The Mays family have a number of properties. And so we explored sites they have near Southeast Grace and the site they have on Main Street and others, just to get a sense of the type of development that might fit on their property. Ideally, we'd like to see maybe some additional housing with maybe commercial on the ground floor. And so we explored those as opportunities and they were gracious enough to say, sure, take a look at that. So we have a sense of where some infill might occur on the street and the types of uses that would contribute, not only to people creating more opportunity for businesses, but for people to live downtown, which creates like that eighteen-hour environment. We all feel a little bit safer when people are living in the downtown. And then the other thing is thinking about neighborhood connections. We've, you talked a bit about Battleground Village and the importance of making that connection to and from Battleground to Main Street. But you have all these neighborhoods that are within like a five-minute walk, five-minute bike ride. Not that you're going to do that every day, but there's a couple of key routes that maybe we could enhance. So they're more attractive for walking and biking if you choose to do that on on a weekend or with family. And so we identified some routes and some right-of-way improvements that you might consider over time to encourage that. So folks feel comfortable and say, yeah, I'll just walk down to Old Town today. And so there's a couple of opportunities, key streets for that. Sam, who's one of your planners here, in the initial proposal that went out to consultants was, let's, let's think about a style guide. Let's think about as future development comes to Old Town, should there be some way to sort of measure the quality of that? Or what are the things we should think about when we're putting color on a wall or we're you know, doing signage improvements? And so he said, include this sort of guidelines element. So it's totally discretionary, but we were able to uncover sort of a DNA of the street. There's interesting characteristics. Five or six blocks around Clark and near Grace is really that compact, sort of walkable Main Street we all know of. But the rest of the quarter sort of ebbs and flows. Buildings are closer, some are set back. You've got a dairy on one end. And so what is the DNA of that? And we really identified sort of three building types, simply called the box. Barrel Mountain is a good example of that. Margaritaville, it's simple buildings, but they've got great detailing on them. They're at the scale of the pedestrian. They're built to the sidewalks and those are great characteristics. You have some where it's a residential building that's maybe transitioning into commercial. That's a style. We think that that is part of the identity. And then there's sort of the, the multi-story, but with a residential roofline, which you see like at Main Street Antiques. And so we said, these are sort of the basic forms. And as new buildings come onto the street, these are kind of the basics you, you should look at in terms of the form of your building. And then we gave some sort of best practices and how-tos of, if you have a business, what are some things you might do in terms of furnishings between your building and the sidewalk? Or if you're going to use the sidewalk for outdoor seating, what are some good ways to do that? And should you maintain good pathways so that people can walk up and down the sidewalk and access your front door from parking? And so there's just some guidelines that inform what we call the first forty feet out in the building and then also the wall surface. So we, we give some best practices and ideas for wall materials and signage and so on. So I show you just a couple of those guideline elements here, get into those, the idea of just outside your building and also up your building frontage. And so there's a number of, of elements here. And we've also put together an implementation plan, knowing that those infrastructure projects are a capitalist that Mark unfortunately has to take care of and find the money for. And so we've, we've sort of outlined where those projects would be and the extent of those projects. And also looking at some of the regulatory elements. I can't actually read this from here, but hopefully you can. Fill me in if I mess, mess something up. We are looking at a few sort of code amendments. One might be for multifamily housing to consider a minimum of one space per unit versus two, for instance. So it's not a requirement. It just says you would, you could only put one parking space instead of two for multifamily for consideration. The MFTE, which is your multifamily tax exemption, that is a tool that some communities use to encourage multifamily development, where maybe that's not happening, or where mixed use is, is more challenging in a community. So that, some cities have used multifamily. I think you have something coming up later on today about that. That may be a tool. So we recommend exploring that as a potential option. Another thing we looked at is, your setback today says, if you're going to build a new building, you have to build it along Main Street, right up to the sidewalk. But with the narrow sidewalks you have today, we wonder, could that be flexible in allowing them to maybe set back the building a few feet more? So you could at least create a ten or twelve-foot sidewalk space? So it's not a requirement, but it would just an allowance per se. So you wouldn't have to build right up to the sidewalk, but you could set back a bit. So these are kind of minor adjustments. Sorry for getting into too much of the details on that. And then there's also Main Street. The, the new cross-section of Main Street isn't a standard today. So we thought, well, we should establish that as a standard for Main Street. And that could be a standard maybe used in other developments. Consider like a new Battleground Village gets built. And now you have this idea of, oh, twelve-foot sidewalks, on-street parking. And so now you have sort of a model of a great street that might be able to be translated into other areas of the community. So that's for consideration, as well as some of those connecting neighborhood routes that I mentioned. Is there a way to make streets more like walk-bike friendly? So it could be just sharrows where it's a lower-volume traffic street, where you allow car, bikes, you know, in the roadway with cars and you have sidewalks built with a little bit of buffer for street trees for instance, between the sidewalk. And so this is a standard that you don't have in the books today. And we just, we brought it forward as a potential recommendation. Another piece, and this is a question we ask not only businesses, which will benefit from this, is this idea of a storefront or facade enhancement program. And that could be something that the city creates, sets some funds aside, and those funds are then provided to grantees who fill out an application, who may be doing some improvements. And that might help cover some of the costs of maybe design fees or, you know, some portion of that storefront improvement. And so we looked at the work that about seven different businesses were doing and about how much they were spending to sort of come up with a, I licked my finger, stuck it in the air and guessed, whatever, a hundred thousand. I know Kristin, I think, may have brought some numbers forward to you, but there's just some considerations in the document and how you might structure a facade grant program, how much money you might set aside and how you might administer it. And it feels like a really good thing to do, seeing what's already sort of happening on the street. So that's, that's in the plan. And I know, I don't know how the city encourages this, but your Main Street businesses don't have a Main Street organization today. And I know the Greater Chamber from Vancouver has, she's been, Janet has been really excited to work with businesses here. And she continues to do that, to try to get them to create, you know, an Old Town Main Street group. And I think having that level of organization and maybe a facade grant program are really great tools and good things. So we're hoping, we'll all continue to talk to Janet after this plan to see if she can engage those businesses. And I know there've been some interest in the businesses themselves to organize and, and work together to encourage, you know, Main Street to be rebuilt and other things. And so I think this is a great time for that energy that's come out of the plan to continue to grow. We're also interested in like, what are sort of temporary or tactical things that could happen that, well, sometimes they're big budget, but they're not like rebuilding your stormwater or your sanitary sewer. One of the projects we were sort of excited about, we were tossing around is this idea of doing a mural on the silos of the Anderson Dairy. Jack with Anderson, he was open to it. So I mean, I, I don't know where they stand on that today, but we do have it in the plan as something that you all might pursue in the future. We have a list of potential funding. That's going to be difficult to do. But we're, we're trying to identify where certain funding could go for different types of implementation projects. That's also in the document. And I'll stop for any questions. And thank you for your patience.
Counsel, any questions?
I'll just make another statement.
Sure. Sure, your mic's on.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I'm just, it was a pleasure working with you. Like, I mean, every time, I'm not working with you, but you know, every time you, I know you showed up at your, your meetings in the city. And it was just a joy talking with you. I, you have this energy and you're, you really like your job. And I don't blame you because it seems more fun than my job. But yeah, it was the level of you're just, everything that you put into this, your organization. And I just love the idea of reaching out to the citizens, making them a part of this. Getting to be there and listening to the citizens was really exciting. That was a joy to see. One question I had though, were you able to talk? Because I know you reached out to a lot of the businesses and got a feel for, you know, what they needed or maybe some gaps in our area and maybe some areas of improvements, things that they liked. Were you able to ever reach out to the owners of the empty lots and to see if that was even something that they were interested in?
Well, I mean, Lanes for sure. Yeah, we talked to them about that site directly on Main Street. I think the only property that we didn't have discussions about are, yes, there's one property behind the engineering firm. So this is just east of Clark and on Northeast First. There's sort of a grassy area there that we think could be a great site if that was acquired by the city for some public parking, because it's not being fully utilized now. When we talked to Lanes, they thought, well, us giving up that, that property on Main Street, if there was some parking, because this would be directly across the front door from them, they could see, oh, that would be, that'd be a great trade where there's some public parking in front of our business. And then maybe that lot could be acquired. So then those were just offhand conversations. But I think the only other site we didn't talk to folks was the sort of vacant parking area behind the food carts. And we just weren't able to find who that owner was. But that was a site that we identified for potential future parking.
Thank you.
But generally, yeah, we were able to talk to most folks.
Any other questions? A lot of work, long process.
Yeah, thank you. You spent a lot of time there too. So thank you, Troy.
Yeah. And refinement study on Parkway and Main. What is, so that was the beginning of your slide. I talked about the intersection. I know that intersection is up for improvement next year. What's a refinement study and why do we need it?
Yeah, that, you know, there's some interim things that can be done. Signalization, improvement down at Southeast First to create an additional lane. So the ability for traffic to get on and off from Southeast First onto Parkway, these are sort of interim conditions that can help the intersection at Main and Parkway perform a little bit better. It's something you could do potentially interim before you do this deeper study of trying to figure out if you can divert some traffic off of Main onto Southeast First from Fifth all the way to Grace. So the plan did identify a couple of sort of interim projects. And I know you're already working at a signalization, potential signalization improvement at Main and Parkway to address some of the backup that's happening there. This additional capacity on Southeast First might be able to help alleviate some of that too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Four-minute break?
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah. So we'll take a four-minute break, four-minute break and be back at nine o'clock? Yeah? Yeah. Let's go cherish. All right. It's nine o'clock. I'll call this meeting back in a session. Next up, looks like we have the Ops Centers Master Plan.
Thank you, counsel. Give me a second. I'll pull up my presentation. All right. So I'll be relatively brief. I know we still have a full agenda, but please feel free to ask me questions. Grant's in the audience. So if you have any sort of operational questions, he'll be happy to pop up to the podium and answer those. So why are we talking about this? So Operation Center needs expansion and upgrades. The city continues to grow, which requires op staff to do more. The size and configuration of the existing buildings constrained effective operations. Some of the structures are quite old and at the walkthrough, you saw some of the conditioning of a few of them. The master planning process allows the city to make good and efficient and cost-effective decisions. So how the process played out is we looked at the space needs for a 20-year built or to accommodate us for the 20-year future. So got example over here on the right-hand side, just with drainage and parks. We looked at how those groups use the facility down there, looked at that spacing needs, looked about, you know, what that would be spread out to 20 years. And that essentially gave us a bunch of square footages. We did that for all of the groups down there. And that square footage allowed us to plan for the, the various buildings that will be needed. So the architect came up with this site plan. As we kind of talked about, the building that we're using for the mechanic shop ultimately would accommodate the offenders crew. At the existing administration building that would get expanded to accommodate staff, training rooms, the larger conference room, those sorts of things. The, that would take out the, um, the storm street building that we looked at to do that. Over to the west of that, we have a new warehouse and shops. That would take out the two buildings, the old kind of office building and the water building there. That would house most of our piping, utility kind of stuff, equipment, those sorts of things. You've got the existing building where we parked the sweeper, back trucks that would stay there. There'd be shop storage canopy and all of that would kind of occur in the front half. On the back half, you would have the new fleet maintenance building. It would include a wash bay. The mechanical equipment related to that wash bay, you'd have essentially covered parking areas. The police building that we talked about, the evidence building. There'd be a new building for relocated backer trucks. So just based purely on the size of those vehicles. Sometimes it's a lot easier just to pull them straight through a building. So long-term, they would get moved there. Other equipment would take their space in the existing building. Down at the bottom, it's just kind of a placeholder, but there's been discussion previously about would we ever need our own fuel station for city vehicles? So there's a spot reserved for that. Just personally, I'm not convinced that's something that's needed near term. But if ultimately it becomes a, becomes a thing, there is space reserved for that. At that point, it protects the wetland that we have. I'm kind of, as we discussed, that treat area is all wetland. It's relatively low category wetland. But it is, is currently so this plan for the 20 years stays out of that area and uses most of the, the back area. What we anticipate for a phase one is kind of everything in that front half. And that'd be the warehouse, the administrative dish in and the essentially expansion of the parking lot. It wouldn't be the full parking lot. We don't believe we need that right of way. But yeah, I would include what you see there. Estimated cost, so, uh, the overall estimate architect came up with was 20 plus million. We think that phase one of that, as I showed in the previous slide, would be about 10 million. There's several funding options for that. We have REIT. Because utilities use that space, utilities can contribute to that. I'll mimic Megan though, and say that, you know, sewer water, there's some large projects coming up. So we want to be careful how we use utility money because we have the parallel force main and then the water transmission line. But those dollars can be used. Airmark request, I think there are some that like to kind of see these projects. So that might be a place to look. And then obviously general fund can be used. Next steps, our architect is finishing up the report. I believe that's expected either end of this month or next month. We already have design funds that are included in the 2025 budget, so we'll keep moving forward. One of the things that staff is researching is, is there a better way to look at the project in terms of design and construction? So typically project would be design, then you go to bid, then you build it. There's a couple alternate methods that can be used for a project like this. One of those is design build. Where essentially you get a contractor and architect on board and they design it, build it. It's all part of a package cost. There's something similar. It's called general contractor, construction manager. And it's very similar in where you get to a certain level of design. You're working with an architect and contractor that's selected through a competitive process. And then you essentially agree on a not to exceed price. And the contractor then goes and, and builds that project for you at that, at that cost. I believe both of those require sign off from the state to use. So there's a process you have to go through. I can't remember which board it is that, that does that, but there's a, a board at the state that has to approve you to use that process. Questions?
Counsel questions? Go ahead. Counsel member Kipers.
Mark, um, does the design build also require that approval?
I believe both of them do, correct?
Interesting. Thanks.
Mark, I just want to say thank you for the tour today, for our study session, getting our eyes on it and really seeing does so much to help us understand your needs and, and your future outlook. So thanks for taking the time and answering our questions and it's really helping us help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. And thank you to the tour guide. Have you used Design Builder, any of those on any other projects in the past?
Grant has some experience, I believe, with GCCM down in Design Build, Design Build down in Bend at his previous position. We as the city have not used it, but he does have that experience.
DCY, DCY used Design Build on some projects? Seem to remember. Anyway, yeah, I'd be interested in seeing if there's some cost savings associated with it, but no questions for me.
I'll just say that when I did that tour a year ago, I'm, I was not happy with what we were providing for our staff out there. I mean, you guys do so much to keep the beautification of our city going. You take care of our water, our sewers. And just to think about you guys being crowded in that little space with buildings that should not be worked in. I'm just thankful that we're able to be in the position that we're in to start looking at this and support you guys in that.
No other questions. We'll move on to, uh, Kristen's going to present ordinance 2025-12, but this is just to set the hearing. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. So we just need to make some minor language tweaks to Title V, which is business taxes, licenses and regulations specifically to chapter 5.03, which is business registration and licensing. These changes are required to align with some changes to the business license model at the state level that become effective January 1st of 2026. So currently, as our code reads, for businesses located outside of city, city limits that have a gross income of $2,000 or less, they're still required to submit for a city business license registration, but they are exempt from the business license fee. The change at the state level is that $2,000 minimum jumps to $4,000 minimum a year. So we have the proposed ordinance in front of you and we would just ask you to please set a public hearing for the September 15th city council meeting to receive input from the citizens on this proposed code change.
Deputy Mayor?
Is that 4,000 gross as a business or 4,000 in the city?
I believe the way it reads it's as a business. So it, um, bear with me, sorry. Annual value of products, gross proceeds of sales or gross income of the business in the city. Thank you. Sorry. So if they are making gross profit of more than 4,000 after this code change within city limits, then they would need to pay that annual fee. Currently it's $41.
Yeah. Okay. I would like to make a motion to set the public hearing for ordinance 25-12 for September 15th.
Second.
Can we get the title read, please?
Ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance amending Battleground Municipal Code Title V Business Taxes, Licenses and Regulations.
I have a motion to set the public hearing for September 5th made by Deputy Mayor Bowman, seconded by Councilmember Ferrer. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is set. Next up, we have Mr. Hersick on another ordinance to set a public hearing.
Okay. So at the last meeting, Max Booth from Maddox came in and talked to us about their site over on the east side of existing Battleground Village. He mentioned that they'd be looking for two different development agreements, one related to infrastructure. And then one more related to the project. I'm just briefly going to touch about the infrastructure ones. So, um, on the chapel and event center site, there's a couple of spots where they'll be filling wetland. Over on the right-hand side of that aerial, you can see the spots. And then on the left-hand side, there's a more engineering drawing of it. What Maddox is requesting from us is to be an applicant on a wetland permit for both ecology and the core. We've done this a couple of different times. TJ's project, uh, down by south of Walmart has this. There was a sub division over by Daybreak School where we did the same thing where we were the applicant. The DA essentially, essentially spells out that they'll pay for all the costs. Really all we're doing is, is being the signature on the application. The thought is, is that looks more favorable to the core and ecology. And again, since it's for city infrastructure, it, it does make sense. So what I'm looking for today is to set the public hearing for that. And then if there's any questions about the DA, uh, which was in the packet, if, if there's anything you'd want to see changed on it.
What was the date you wanted for the hearing?
Uh, September 15th.
September 15th. I'll move to set the public hearing for ordinance 2025-14 for September
15th.
18th.
15th.
15th. Oh, 15th.
Can we get the title read, please?
Ordinance number 2025-14, an ordinance adopting a development agreement between the City of Battleground and BG Village Property LLC.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ferrer, seconded by Councilmember DeRochers to set the public hearing for September 15th. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On to Florence Robinson.
Okay. Another second to hold this one up. Okay. So recently we went out to bid for Florence Robeson South Park improvements. It's included in the 2025 budget, essentially new equipment out there. The project was originally programmed for Florence Robeson North, but was shifted to Robeson South. A lot of that had to do with the more natural type that Florence Robeson North is. And so it was thought that this would be better on the south side. The city received a state grant for the project, the new amount of $167,000, 167,810. So we went out, we had base bid and some alternates. And what an alternate is, is it allows you to look at a additional piece for the project, but you do not have to accept it in order to move forward with the project. There's benefits to doing this. You get to see what something may cost, whether you want to do it or not. And again, it, it just allows you to look at additional options without affecting your base bid. So as part of that base bid, we had two new play structures, uh, both for the younger age, so six to 23 and two to five. We had an outdoor gym. All of the new areas will get a rubber play surface. The benefit of that is lower maintenance cost. It's better for drainage and it has full ADA compliance. And then the associated improvements to that, there's some additional sidewalk that's necessary, those sorts of things. We had four alternates. One of the requests we get quite frequently is for shading for picnic or for playground equipment. So we thought it'd be a good idea to at least take a look at it and provide that option. So, uh, you have alternate one, which is for the six to 23-month play structure. Alternate two is for the two-year to five-year. Alternate three for the shade for the outdoor gym. And then as part of our yearly budget, we have playground equipment replacement. This park is actually up for the replacement of the park or the equipment that's already out there. So we actually have purchased that equipment and rather than going for a separate contractor, we added on an alternate to just do it as this project. You know, assuming we'll get a better price because they're already be out there working. So here you can see kind of a site plan of where everything will be. You've got where the existing is being replaced. The, um, younger age will be to the south of that. And then the gym equipment will be over to the east end of the park. The cost of the base bid came in at about 381,000. The alternate, so for the younger shade is little under 12,000. Alternate two was, uh, 13 and a half. Alternate three is about 14. And then the installation of the new structure is 40. So you have a ton of options in front of you. You can reject all bids. Cost would be nothing, but we'd lose the ability to use that grant. You can award the base bid, which is the 381, and award base bid and all alternates, which would be 461. All, award base bid and alternate four. Again, we already have the equipment coming, so we're going to need a contractor to install it. So that would be at 421. You can do any other combination that you would like. So it vary. And just some things to keep in mind when thinking about that, the grant is covering that 167,000. Park impact fees can cover any of the remaining work. And then, as I mentioned, the alternate four is part of our already budgeted parks repairs for this year. Questions?
Counsel member Kipers?
Mark, on the, could you go back to the slide on the alternatives, please?
That's fine.
Yeah, thank you. So if I understand correctly, you're saying that alternate 1A, for example, is specific to what you would do for that six to 23-month age group?
Correct.
Alternate two for the two to five year, et cetera.
Correct.
And then the next slide shows your options of what those alternates are.
This is, this is at the base bid here.
Okay. So the covers are the, is the cover that, whoop?
Sorry. These, these covers would be the alternate.
Okay. So I think my question is, did we look at other options than this shade temporary? I mean, I know it's not temporary, but it feels temporary because it's not like a hard shell cover of some sort. Like, did we look at the, what the cost difference are? What another design would look like?
No, all, all we did was take what the manufacturer had recommended for the specific piece of equipment. So the manufacturer of the specific equipment has a related shade product for it. And so this is what they recommended for this, for those particular pieces.
When I look at this and thinking of taking children, there, it's going to, that's going to provide some, a minor amount of coverage. It's not going to help with, okay. It's not gonna help with, okay, it's raining for a month and the equipment is all wet and the ground is all wet, you know, it's not going, it's not gonna give an option for people to bring their, whoops, sorry, bring their children and get them out for the day.
Correct, that's a good clarification. These are intended to deal with the heat issue. They're not intended to deal with rain. So these are for shade, they're sun shades that essentially keep the equipment cooler, so that is a good clarification.
And what's the, what is the life expectancy of uh that shade, for example?
That, yeah, that one, my guess would be, and I don't know for sure, but I think that's probably in the ten to fifteen year. Something like that where it's more integral to the structure, you probably have a a longer life out of it, but um you know, that one that would go with the younger, it's, it's probably on the lower side. And that would be the shade part, not necessarily the poles. Poles would be there forever, but yeah, over time, those shades just get weathered and.
Right, right. And then do you take it down during the winter? If it's just meant for heat?
I think it's meant for, meant for full time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Mark. Um I too had some concerns when I was looking at this, that it was just shade and not rainproof. It's a lot of money for shade when we spend most of the year in rain. Um I would prefer, when you add that up, that's almost forty thousand dollars for three shades. Um I would have to be really convinced to to say yes to something like that, but I like the alternate four A to be added for the same reasons that you mentioned. We already have that in our plans. It could be cost effective, so. I would vote for the base bid with the alternate four A. I don't like the shades. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification. Very helpful. Councilmember Ferrer?
Okay, get ready. It's gonna take a minute. This is my neighborhood, so I get to see the kids playing and so I'm more invested in this one. Um I did see something on our packet that mentioned bench replacements, trash cans replacements, is that correct?
Yeah, so um it's probably hard to see in the drawing here, but if you look at where the um equipment's going, there's a couple little rectangles. And then a circle, and then you can see that by the um gym equipment as well. Those are new benches and and garbage cans.
Because we definitely need our, our old ones replaced.
And we can, we can do that.
We have five benches with the backs, like regular benches. The wood is and the green is rusting, and then um we have six benches, little ones that don't have the backs on them. And then we have garbage cans that are rusty now, and I was, I was gonna ask, in regards to the benches and the garbage can replacements, are we gonna be unified with other um parks? I know McConnell, they have some nice black ones that they've put in there that seems to be more rust, rust resistant?
Yeah, I, I, what I understand recently is Ops decided to go with a bit different, and I think that's the one that you're talking about. So going forward, that's what, what it will look like.
Last longer, you won't have to treat it and on all that stuff. Okay. Now, the other thing is um are we set in stone with these play structures?
Yes.
Okay, we are.
Yes.
Well, for the kids, I'm going to let you know what their request was. Um I got to talk with the kids in the na- that were playing on the playground, and it was really fun to be like, hey, I'm your city councillor. And we're gonna be talking about your park today. Is there anything that you guys would like to see? And they had mentioned replacing the basketball board because that one's fallen apart, um which is a lot of older kids for that one, since we're trying to do, make this multi, you know, generational. Um they would like, a lot of girls would like to see monkey bars in there. Everybody wants swings. I'm sorry, it's a neighborhood park. I don't know why we're not talking swings, brother. Next is more chairs under the play structures, and then they were thinking, I thought, one of these kids, I thought it was a good idea. Why, why don't we do rubber bark chips? Why is it always just the, the wood ones? Cause then it would be just like one and done, yeah?
So the, and that's what's here is the, all these new, the two new spots are getting the rubber play surface, so.
Right.
It's actually not even rubber bark chips. It's a like.
Right, and I, no, I like that one, because the little kids, if they get the, they won't get the boo-boos. But then you still have the bark in, barked us in the big one, in the big area, so.
Correct, and our long-term plan is to go to this kind of setup with the, the rubber surfacing.
Okay.
It's obviously, if you've seen the bid, it's, it's fairly high upfront cost. But the backend and the fact that it helps with drainage, a good example is over at Kiwanis Park. All the water runs off the concrete and it gets into the play area and it makes it kind of mushy, so. With rubber, you can drain everything to actual drainage system and you don't get that situation. And then just the fact that it's ADA, like, you know, you don't, you don't have any issues rolling across the, in a wheelchair.
Okay, I'm almost finished. Then they would like hanging bars.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yes.
Uh this is not the time to design the park. The park has already been designed.
No.
And this is a time to approve either bids or not approve bids. So I think going through and, and listing what people want is inappropriate at this time. We've already went through this process. And um I think we need to move on.
Okay, fine. I will, I will stop what I'm saying, but I will. We didn't know the layout at the time, so, okay, we're stuck in, in the structure. Sorry, kids, I don't get to continue, but I would like to say we were not aware of where the placement of the structures were going to be. And I have a big concern with the outdoor gym in that location. At the time, I thought we were talking, because when we were talking about north, we were talking about individual, you know, little stations um around the outside perimeter of the park, but now we have this big one. And, and then we're talking about a shade, but if we were to move that closer to the trees, then you would automatically have shade. Then we wouldn't have to spend eleven thousand dollars for the shade. But I will say for the, the people who use that park every day, who love their, their space, they do, they set up volleyball court, uh volleyball nets in that area. They also do soccer in that area, so I guess um I would just, my biggest concern is placing it in there, and you're going to take a huge chunk of the park away from how it is actually being used by the neighborhood uh families.
Okay, Councilmember Overholzer?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um first of all, Mark, thank you for taking the time to do all this.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your professionalism. And I concede to your professionalism when we talk about what structures should go where, so thank you for that. What I will say is, um I am, it, I'm gonna kind of mimic what uh Councilmember Davis said. I'm a huge proponent of uh utilizing the equipment that we've already purchased and the uh contractor that could potentially be used for this project to save the money to have that other structure installed, so I'm, I'm all about the base bid plus the four A, I believe was.
Correct.
So again, just thanks for your time.
Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I think um as a council, you know, we, we look at these projects and they're never gonna be perfect. We just built a pickleball court, and we went out there and we talked to pickleball players, and they complained about wind and sun in their eyes. Right? And we hear people say, we don't like the noise, and we hear people say, you know, this structure shouldn't be here, we should have built it here. I think this is why we have a parks plan. This is why we go through this stuff. Um it's never gonna be perfect. We moved this from the north side because it wasn't perfect for the north side, and now we're hearing it's not perfect for the south side. So I think we, as a council, need to be very careful, and number one, these are not um my park. Uh just because I live by it. We, we did this because this is one of the parks that needed to have structures replaced, repaired. Um not because it was next to a council member's house. Um and, and I think that we need to, to make sure that, that people know that. It's not because because someone uh wanted it done. Um this is, this was part of the parks plan. This is what we approved. I do agree with my council members to the left here with the, and, and the ones that have talked about the sun shade. Um you know, I see it, those are just more things to be vandalized, I think. You know, while, while it does help the kids that are under two to stay, and, and the structures themselves. Um to, to stay out of the heat, I, I see those being poles that are climbed on and uh things that are, that are uh jumped on, those type of things, and I think it's a lot of money for a wedge piece of burlap or whatever they put there. I, I know that's, that's every, everything we do is, is a lot of money, but, but I do like the fact that of finishing out uh the, the replacement projects and, and getting that all done at the same time and, and and completing these things so that uh we're not building new stuff, but the old stuff isn't being repaired, so thank you.
Uh before we go through the second round, I'd say I, I agree with the, with the four A add-on. I just want to clarify. Um these structures are plastic, correct? I mean, these aren't the, um I, I remember our slides, man, they were metal. So I don't know. I'm, I'm fine with uh my colleagues to the left. Uh Councilmember Kipers?
Thank you, and thank you again, Mark. Um I just wanna articulate that I agree with uh what everyone has said. Uh I mentioned earlier, I had concerns about the cover, and I think, I think even though that's, um that style might be recommended by the manufacturer. I don't think, based on the conversations I've had with people who are requesting some kind of cover, their ideas is not you know, kind of the umbrella shade kind of effect, and so I do think if we have to move forward with that approach now, um then, okay, but I do think in the future, we all have to look at other options in other parks to get a better structural cover that allows for more year-round play activities. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ferrer?
So I would just like to say that, yeah, I have no problem with the, the base bid. Adding to the four A to uh help with costs. I will say, though, I, I would prefer that outdoor gym not to take up an open space that people use for the soccer field and volleyball and little league, T-ball, you know, groups use that. Um it's not about my park. I just said that I live to it, so I know a little bit more about it than maybe everybody else on this panel who doesn't drive by every day and get to talk to everybody every day. I can guarantee you will see me at, if anything happens at another park in our neighborhood, you'll see me knocking on the neighborhood, asking, what do you want? So it's not about this being my park. This is, I just wanna represent the citizens who are gonna be using this park, and it's just gonna be crushing to know that we crammed the park with stuff and we didn't think about how it is actually being used right now.
Councilmember Overholzer?
Uh yeah, I'd like to move to approve the Florence Robeson South Park Improvement Bid Award. Uh base bid and the four A option.
Second.
What's that, Ferrer? A motion and a second, Councilmember DeRochers?
Yeah, I just had a comment about the outdoor gym, and the reason it's placed there is so that people can access it. If you see, there's a walking path. We would have to extend that all the way down and pay for.
You don't need a walking path. It's a field.
Well, is that a walking path around it?
You can easily look at a tattletale.
Just to hold, hold on discussion. I'm sure with ADA, you need a path.
Right, so it, we would have to pay to have it all the way down in the bushes, so this is the least cost.
That's, that's, that's enough to say, let's, here's, Councilmember, I'll give you a piece of advice. When the next time that a park thing comes up, if go talk to the citizens before the bid award. Because if we're trying to change things at the bid award, that's, that's problematic for engineering and is problematic for the process.
I've been talking about since.
So um you know, get, get ahead of it and, and then maybe your frustrations will be lessened on um on that process. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Overholzer, seconded by Councilmember Ferrer to approve the Florence Robinson South Park Improvements Bid with the add-on of, was that four A?
Correct.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving on. Deputy City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, mayors of council. Um on this item, as way of background, um in the US Supreme Court decision of Gideon v. Wainwright, the court confirmed the right of indigent defendants to legal counsel. In Washington State, the responsibility to provide and oversee public defense is delegated to local governments, that includes cities. The city of Battleground pursuant to RCW has established the Battleground Municipal Court. It is a court of limited jurisdiction that is authorized to hear certain misdemeanor crimes and civil infractions committed within its boundaries. Through separate ILAs with the cities of La Center and Ridgefield, uh Battleground Mini Court also provides those same services to those jurisdictions. In October of twenty three, the Washington State Supreme Court requested that the Washington State Bar Association review a study that was conducted by RAND regarding public defense workloads. Uh and then provide the court recommendations um on the matter. Since the nineteen eighties, the State Board Association has set its own set of public defense standards with the state legislature actually later adopting law that the standards endorsed by the Bar Association for the provision of public defense should serve as the guidelines to local legislative authorities. In response to the court's request, in March of twenty twenty four, the State Bar Association issued a set of recommendations specific to public defense workload. And after a period allowing for public comments on the matter, on June twenty ninth of this year, the Supreme Court issued an exec- an order that mandated new public defense standards for indigent defense services effective January one of twenty six. Those standards are more fully described in the staff report that was attached uh to this matter. Uh staff had prepared a resolution twenty five oh nine that would comply with the court's order. Staff recommends the city council consider and adopt that resolution. That concludes our staff report. We're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Move to adopt a resolution twenty five oh nine as presented. Second.
Any other questions or discussions? I will just add that I, I really want this to be on the legislative agenda to get a law. Uh I really believe that the Supreme Court is an overreach and that it is just a camel's nose in the tent to decriminalize uh some statutes that we like to enforce. Uh so with that, uh we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, seconded by Councilmember Overholzer to approve resolution twenty five zero nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? On to Kristen.
Good evening. Uh so one more item in front of you, resolution twenty five eleven related to chapter three point four five, multifamily housing tax exemption. During the July twenty first council meeting, we um had a presentation discuss the MFTE or multifamily tax exemption program in our current residential target areas. Staff was given direction um by council to go ahead and move forward with designating an additional residential target area as part of our MFTE program. Uh per our RCW, the process to designate an, a residential target area begins with a resolution of an intent to adopt a designated area. So we have the resolution twenty five eleven in front of you. And staff would like to ask council to please set a public hearing for the September fifteenth council meeting to consider adoption of the residential, I'm sorry, excuse me, of the resolution and receive input from the citizens of Battleground.
Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Mayor, move to set a public hearing for resolution twenty five eleven, chapter three point four five, multifamily housing tax exempt intent to designate residential target area for September fifteenth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, seconded by Councilmember DeRochers. Any discussion or questions? Will we move to a vote? Hearing seen none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? City Manager?
All right, last item. So regarding EMS District Two, um the city councils in Battleground, La Center, and Ridgefield and Woodland are being asked to consider uh EMS District Two system design decisions. It's about a fifty-page document that was inside your packet. Um and either a
Um, and either approve the current draft or provide requested revisions that staff can bring back to the EMS District Two workgroup by September tenth. Briefly, a little background, uh, City of Vancouver has been administering, uh, the ambulance service contract for the Clark County, um, EMS District Two, which includes, of course, Battleground, Ridgefield, La Center, Woodland and, um, portions of the county since two thousand and fifteen. Last year in May, uh, City of Vancouver notified EMS Two that they were going to pursue a separate contract um, with AMR, uh, focused solely on just the city and Fire District Five beginning in two thousand and twenty-five. So we EMS Two had three different options. One was to, um, issue our own RFP. One was to piggyback off of City of Vancouver's contract or, uh, the option that we, um, took was to keep with the City of Vancouver for one more year, which would expire December thirty-one of this year and, um, giving us that grace of one year to figure out what we were gonna do. So EMS chose that arrangement. Again, we have till just the end of this year. On April fourteenth of this year, um, EMS Two decided to leverage the City of Vancouver's negotiated contract with AMR and use the cooperative purchasing option, otherwise known as piggybacking, uh, according to state law. So each jurisdiction in EMS Two is being asked for their feedback on the system design, uh, decisions. Um, these decisions provide some important, um, policy level framework to develop their legal instruments like the ILA ordinances and of course, the ambulance service contract. So we have a whole chapter in the Battleground Municipal Code, um, chapter eight point three two. It's referred to as regulatory standards for emergency services. That will need to be changed as we amend the, um, design decisions, but we can do that separately um, later on in the year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or take your feedback for those decisions.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor Bowman?
I just wanted to all of you, thank you for the work going into this. This is, uh, something that usually takes quite a bit of time to put together. And when we didn't have time, it's, it's been a lot of pressure that, that everyone's been under to make this work and make sure that we have the ambulance services that we need for our citizens here. And I, I don't think a lot of people understand this contract and understand why we're in the position we're in. But, uh, it took a lot of work from all the parties that were involved. And, uh, so I appreciate the work that you guys have done on this.
Yeah, I, I would echo that and thank councilmember Overholzer for his work on the committee. Uh, and, uh, our city manager's expertise in this was invaluable. So, uh, she was on the work group. And probably because of those two, carried a lot of weight with the county council, uh, marshal. So do appreciate all the work that went into it. And I do not have enough expertise to weigh in or give any more advice than, um, if you two think it's good, I'm good.
And I will just offer that there was changes into the makeup of the board to have representation from fire as well as what they call the administrative um, board that deals with the day-to-day pieces of it. We're still on track though to um, move forward with a um, a model that is ratepayer versus subsidized by government. So that could change in the future, but at this point, that's what we're headed towards still.
Anybody have any heartburn with moving forward? Okay. Brings us to administrative reports.
Um, just real quick, I attended the WCMA conference, uh, last week and joined several city managers from and city administrators and other staff from across the state. Uh, we discussed everything from emerging issues in public safety, um, and addressing and defining e-motocycles. This is an emerging issue that, that cities are, are grappling with. Uh, to legislative impacts and even the usage of AI in the workplace. Um, I think what's comforting is knowing that cities are still also dealing with the same challenges we are. Um, and with that, I have one reminder here. The City Cafe for City Council is September tenth at nine thirty at Allen Ernie's. Um, please RSVP to Alicia ASAP if you haven't done so already. That concludes my report.
Any council communications this evening?
I got one.
Okay.
I'm just giving an update on, I guess there's some roads that are supposed to be fixed tomorrow.
You're giving it?
Southwest Sixth. Does that sound right?
I, I actually ran around the city yesterday. There are signs up. They have to place those so that, um, you don't have individuals parking their car. They're trying to finish up the area between, um, really this area in Kiwanis Park and then in the Copperleaf area. They still have a couple streets to do, if that's what you're referring to.
So I just found out, so sorry, I'm doing it now. But I just found out, because they were supposed to do it last week and then the signs were out or a couple days ago and then, but then they said because of the weather, they had to change, whatever. Um, so now it's supposed to be tomorrow. However, the the neighborhood was concerned that there's gonna be, their garbage gets picked up on the same day. And so they were just worried. And they tried reaching out, haven't been able, you know, to get a call back. So I'm just letting you guys know if that's a concern or not.
We coordinated, we believe, uh, we coordinated the schedules of those, um, streets with garbage pickup, so I don't think.
Okay, I don't know. I just had a, a, a citizen say, catch me at the park saying, hey, I got this sign and are they aware that my garbage gets picked up on the same day? So, I mean, I was letting you guys know.
Okay.
What I heard.
Okay, any, any other council communications? The next regular city council meeting will be held September fifteenth, Monday at seven PM with the study session at six PM. It is nine forty-seven. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.